Good evening. It is June 12th. This is the Southborough School Committee meeting of Wednesday, June 12th. The last school committee meeting of the year after a very successful year. And the first item on the agenda is the election of officers. It is the role of the superintendent when officers are elected for the new school year, to have the gavel and to ask for nominations for the chairperson position.
I'd like to nominate Katora Martin as the chairperson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Congratulations. And with that, a quick change of gavel and...
You don't have to vote.
Yes, you have to vote. I think that was...
Oh, sorry, pause. I was too excited to give up the gavel.
By nomination.
Is there a formal vote? All right. Congratulations. I don't know how two years gets you so lordy around here, but here we are.
It's performance, that's what it is. It's not just...
Okay. So this is interesting. Okay, so election of super...
So I just take over from here? Nominations for vice chair?
Oh, nominations for vice chair. Okay.
I'd like to nominate Roger Challen as vice chair.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, ready to vote? Okay, all in favor?
Do you abstain?
All right, congratulations.
We're right and reluctant.
And we need a secretary, right? Okay. Any nominations for that? Can we clarify what the secretary does?
Question.
Well, I can clarify what the secretary is charged to do going forward. It's to take the minutes of the notes of the meetings, whether they... Just as sort of validation for the taping if we have a need for clarification. And also if that secretary happens to be a participant in the subcommittees, which may or may not take place, to take the minutes of those meetings as well and provide them to the superintendent for transcribing them.
In that case, all nominate the woman behind the keyboard, Jessica Devine.
She had her head down.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Jessica did what students do. No. They're not going to see me if my head is down. I'm invisible.
It's like if something needs to be given, give it to a busy person, right? Okay. All right.
I can offer some assistance on the superintendency, just for clarification. The chair is automatically part of the superintendency union, so that would be Katora.
Yeah.
And then past practice has been the two most senior members of the committee.
Okay, so...
It is a practice.
Yes. All right. Can we nominate and vote on that? So would anybody like to nominate?
I'll nominate Paul Lesmond for the superintendency union number three.
Roger at the same time?
Second.
Okay. All right, discussion, vote. Okay. We need one more. And I will nominate Roger Challen for the superintendency union number three. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, vote.
I'm standing.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Now we move on. Okay, so the next item is audience sharing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to share anything? Okay, so we'll move on to new business. The first item is Trotter Middle School Improvement Plan.
That's us. That's us. Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We do really appreciate the opportunity to update you on what is happening at Trotter. And tonight, we have a few special things planned for you. First, we will share the accomplishments of our 2017-2019 School Improvement Plan from the point of view of our students, and we thought of no better way to do that. And then, Mr. Hershak and I will attempt to introduce our 2019-2021 School Improvement Plan as proposed this evening. So the way we'd like to start things is I want to introduce three of our students who are Trotter's finest that will be sharing their work in programs that are very dear to us. And they are ones you're already aware of, but will be brought up to speed. The first program that we are going to present on is Youth and Philanthropy. And two months ago, Ms. Joan Tetro, our longtime Trotter faculty member, shared her work as the advisor of Youth and Philanthropy Program. And tonight, one of her students, eighth grader Arjun Yarabuthu, will share his work. So at this time, I'd like to call Arjun to come up, and he will present.
Is this a presentation?
This is. We have some presentation now.
Okay, hi, everyone. So I'm Arjun Yarabuthu. This is Mr. Lavoy just said, and I'm a member of the Southborough Youth and Philanthropy Program. So just some of the basic outlines of what we did during this program was we started in the program by defining the meaning of philanthropy. So the definition is the desire to promote the welfare of others expressed mainly by the generous donation of monies to good causes. The definition brought into our minds what we're all doing here. And after that, we started getting into it by defining community and looking at nonprofit structures. The next couple of meetings after that, we launched our nonprofit research. And each of us with a partner researched nonprofits and reported what we found. When we had finished, we made evaluations towards the nonprofits. We looked at their budget and how the money would affect the nonprofit and what their mission was. Soon after, we chose which nonprofits we were going to visit and started preparing for them with questions and rules while we were there. So after two weeks, we took a lot of notes and asked a lot of burning questions we had. After that, we started our decisions for who we were going to fund. So kind of how we made our decisions was a tricky one. So first, we decided ourselves... Divided ourselves into small groups, and each group had a topic. For example, there was environment, healthcare, animal care, and education, and many more. There were specific organizations that fell under each topic that a group was assigned to. We researched the groups we were assigned to using their websites and GuideStar, a really helpful website to easily get their... To find such facts as their budget, success rate, and purpose of their nonprofit. We put together a presentation of the nonprofits. We were presenting at the end. We voted for four of our favorite organizations. We based this off of which group we thought would be the best fit for our funding. The next week, we started our site visits. The first sites came to Trotter because they didn't have a well-equipped building to bring us to, but the other two were more well-known and they could bring us to their building slash organization headquarters. So the next week, we visited our other two sites, and we got tours and we had opportunities to ask as many questions as we wanted. So we gained many skills that we went throughout the YIP program. So through our experience at YIP, we learned valuable skills that we can take into the next chapters of our lives. In addition, we learned about techniques and information that we can use throughout our lives to college and to a job eventually. We were educated on topics from NPO structures and consensus building. We obtained lots of information, but the few that were really helpful were nonprofit structures, types of foundations, plannings, program budgets, and how to perform a successful pitch and site visit. And last but not least was consensus building. So when it comes to nonprofit structures, we went about the different levels of organizations. For example, the board of directors, different sections, and a CEO or executive president. At the... When it comes to the types of presidents, there are three main types that we focused on: the family, corporate, and independent foundations. The family foundations are usually founded by an individual or family and are generally operated by members of that family. The corporate foundations are created and funded by companies but are still separate from the companies, but are run by a board of directors that are operated by the company itself. And the last one is an independent foundation, which operate from their original donors, separately from their original donors or original sources of funds. So another one is planning our program budgets, which can be helpful in so many different things in life. We learned about the different sections of a business that need money in order for the business to survive and thrive. For example, like the rent of buildings, utilities, supplies, equipment, and salaries. So another part is having to have a successful site visit, which can be also an important aspect of jobs in college. So we have to ask good questions because it'll give you a greater insight on the site and listen attentively for the answers. So last but not least, we have consensus building. So we really needed to focus on this topic because we were joined with FAE. And FAE kids were around all the world, like Australia, China, and many other places, and still in the Metro West region, like Framingham and Southborough. So we learned how to keep an open mind. When a point is agreed, you say, "I believe that you understand my point of view. I believe that I understand your point of view." And whether or not I prefer this idea of tours, I will support it because it was reached openly and fairly through a simple democracy. So last but not least, some more skills that we acquired was how to interview organizations, how to work and reach decisions as a group, understand what nonprofits do and how they work, and have more people insights on the lives of other people. So from this Youth and Philanthropy Program, we gained many unique new skills and experiences that would not have been possible anywhere else. Among these, we learned how to interview people in order to get the most information and be active audiences. We worked well as a group, and it was very interesting to see how different people were able to work together and reach a decision through consensus building. We are now more experienced in dealing with nonprofit organizations and have more knowledge in how they work and who they serve. Through site visits, we were allowed insights into people's lives who are less fortunate than us. And this made us more appreciative about what we have and think about more about how we can help other people in the world.
So before I let Arjun go, I wanted to let everyone know that he's got travel plans that are starting right now, and his family actually changed their plans so he would have the opportunity to present here tonight. So Arjun, thank you very much for being here. And obviously, you can see some of the skills that you've developed, and an honor that Mrs. Tetro has something for you, so you can stand up with me.
So, good evening. During our award recognition on Monday, the two other members of our Trotter group will be receiving a certificate of appreciation for Trotter from all the hard work that they did for the program. So I wanted to make sure that Arjun was able to receive his. So you're getting a little bit more...
Yeah.
You're live on TV. So I'd like to just read the certificate briefly. It is in... Arjun, it is in recognition of the dedication, consistent effort, and professional demeanor shown while participating in the 2018-2019 Community Grant Awards on behalf of the Southborough Youth and Philanthropy Program. And we at Trotter are very proud of you all, and we thank you for helping us out with this new program and doing such a wonderful job representing Trotter and Southborough. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. All right, so the next program, which you guys have heard about before, is Project Unify. And Project Unify has really brought the inclusion practices of our classroom outside of the classroom, and has created opportunities for all of our students to participate in special events. We are very proud of the development of this program under the leadership of our advisory team, which includes Mrs. Lunder, who is here tonight, as well as Mrs. Klein and Mrs. Scarebo. An eighth grader, Ben Shanzur, and seventh grader Avery Leonard are here to present and give you an update on what Project Unify has been all about lately. So guys, come on up.
All right, as Mr. Lavoy mentioned, I'm Ben Shanzur. I'm the current president of... I guess now, almost not, but current president of Project Unify.
And I'm Avery Leonard, and next year, I'll be one of the co-leaders of Project Unify. So the Unify community. We are a group of dedicated and empowered sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And our mission is to embrace and include all students at Trotter, no matter their disability, including the students at the NAC, Castle, and Collaborative Programs.
So we've made an impact in many different ways. We... Well, first and foremost, we try to just... Our overall goal is making sure everyone's included. For example, if someone's sitting alone at lunch, we invite them to a table, just basic stuff like that. And then, we also host parties and events, such as our Welcome Back to School Party, our Unified Holiday Party, our Polar Plunge, where we raised about $14,000 for the Special Olympics, our Tide Eye Party/Blue Day, which helped raise awareness for autism awareness, lunch bunches, peer partners, the Fun Run, school sporting events, drama productions, and our music department.
Does anyone have any questions for our fine presenters? Anything you want to know more about?
I don't have a question, but just a comment.
Yes, please.
You know, currently, I have a daughter at the high school, and she's a member of the Best Buddies Program. And it's just phenomenal how many kids you see from Southborough that are members of that. And I have no doubt that it's because of things like this, where they've been involved in this since literally day one in Southborough Schools. So, well done.
Thank you.
And you have a special presentation for members of the committee, don't you imagine?
Yeah. We brought little bracelets that we gave out at the end of our Polar Plunge for everyone. If you guys want to take them.
The trophy is blue. Congratulations.
Did you leave these to people that took the plunge?
Yeah.
So I can tell people I took the plunge. Yes, this is... I feel like a fraud.
You can wear it proudly, Mr. Challen.
Look at this. So I think I got a comment.
Yes, please, Mr. Challen. Go right ahead.
I was really impressed by the presentations, especially the eye contact that all the presenters demonstrated. It's not easy to do that early on in your presenting lives, and I was... I noted it specifically, you know, from everyone. So it was impressive to see.
They did a fabulous job. This is... Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, very much for being here tonight. So we are going to attempt now to follow that. I don't know, are we going to be capable of doing this? I don't know. We're going to certainly try. So what we wanted to create in that opening presentation is just how the student experience is really being driven by our School Improvement Plan for 2017-2019. And all of our goals are riddled into a lot of the work that they're doing. So looking ahead for our School Improvement Plan 2019-2021, this plan is really unlike any that we've had in the past. And it's not about the continuation of prior goals, but it's genuinely the launching of new projects that are rooted in our past but really paved the way for our future. So the four goal areas that we're going to be commenting on tonight and presenting to you are student oral communication skills, which you just had a little taste of, the questioning methodologies that we're using inside the classroom, our enhanced student connectedness, which is a twist of prior goals that we've had, and then using student feedback with Canvas and the enhancements we're trying to make through our learning management system, Canvas. So we are going to present each of the goals. Gary is going to present the first and third, and I'm going to do the second and the fourth. So I'm going to turn things over to Gary, who'll be presenting about student oral communication skills.
Mr. Challen, I'm glad you recognize the presentation skills of our students, because that is...
You're not going to take credit for that.
I will not.
Zero.
None whatsoever. But that is at the heart of our first goal. If we were to look at the standards in which our students are asked to perform, our literacy standards, what you would notice is that student presentation communication is really at the core of a lot of our work. They are asked to adapt their speech in a variety of contexts. They're required to present claims and findings, where they have logical ideas using pertinent descriptions, facts, and details. In addition, they're required to use eye contact, appropriate volume, and clear pronunciations. They need to engage effectively in a range of discussions, whether one-to-one, group, or teacher-led discussions. And lastly, they must include multimedia components and visual displays in their presentation to clarify their claims. What you have to realize is this work is happening across many disciplines in all grades here at Trotter. What our goal is really to do is to refine that work. And the goal is to build upon this work, to have consistency and growth from year to year and over three-year experience. What I want to show you right now is just a small snapshot of the work our students are doing. This example is from an eighth grade social studies class, Mrs. James' class, and this is an eighth grade student, Lee Gould, who's going to talk a little bit about the Renaissance period. So Mr. Lavoy, can you just show this?
I will.
One minute video?
One minute, not 15 minutes.
Right.
Yeah. And not a repetitive song.
No reference.
In today's modern realm, for Renaissance persons, it's a common theme that someone who is intelligent, well-educated, and talented in the years. But how did this reputation of the Renaissance come to be, and what makes the Renaissance known for its dark, white world? Well, the term Renaissance is a term that was given to the story of this era of change, and it translates to rebirth or to be reborn. And this is a very fitting title, as many artists and scholars during this time period started to try to recapture what the world was like before the Middle Ages. And so this led to a sort of rebirth, a revival of ancient ideas. And there was also a transition from the focus on God, church, and religion, otherwise referred to as theology, to the people of nature, which is called humanism. And there was also sort of this artistic rediscovery of nature, and so nature and humans became... It shifted from something that was sort of more... Something that was used as more of a background element, and was only really used when necessary. But how did this reputation of the Renaissance come to be? In today's modern realm, for Renaissance persons, it's a common...
We're going to pause here, but we're going to stop here. What you didn't see in the rest of the 13 minutes of this video is that Lee continued on with this presentation without using a single note, with perfect eye contact, elocution of ideas, and what she did seamlessly is reference, you know, the accomplishment of the Renaissance with visual support behind her. She was able to answer all her questions effectively. And matter of fact, I wish Lee was here to finish our School Improvement Plan presentation.
She's not here.
Okay, so what I want to be very... What I want the committee to be aware of is that this goal is not about student presentations, it's about student communication. And what we mean by that is that comes in a variety of forms. It could be a debate in a science class about the effects of economic development on the environment. It could be students in a tech ed class explaining the development of their crash test car and the reflection of what worked well and what did not work well. It could be either a group of students or an individual of students explaining mathematical reasoning in a math class. What we're trying to do is build more consistency and a progression throughout the course of the year. And although Lee's work is tremendous, what this work will do is really focus on the behind-the-scenes efforts in the classroom. So part of the process is that we want our teachers to inventory what they're already currently doing and take stock of both the formal and informal opportunities in which students have to communicate within their classroom. We want grade-level teams to identify criteria for proficiency levels and to develop a rubric that can be used across the grades. Teams will then identify how and when students would be measured. Students' communication will be measured and assessed annually. The process will also require teams of teachers to analyze and discuss best practices around teaching and learning. I think it's also important that the teams need to go beyond traditional classroom participation to accomplish this work. And we also need to develop alternatives and opportunities that accomplish the same communication goals without students having to present in front of a group, whether that's through technological platforms such as podcasts or other alternatives. Lastly, the teams will measure student performance throughout the course of the year in hopes of seeing growth in our communication skills in our students.
Very ambitious. Excellent. Thank you, Gary. So the second goal that we're embarking on is to really research and develop our questioning methodologies. So this year, all 10 schools, as you guys are aware, participated in instructional rounds. And the district has committed itself to making instructional rounds part of the improvement toolkit. The rounds process has had many benefits, but one that sticks out really for me is the power of observation. Having teachers get into other teachers' classrooms can have a strong impact on our collective growth. And in our rookie year, we had a lot to be happy about, where we successfully conducted over 220 classroom observations across the 10 schools. For Trotter, our visits took place in November of 2018, and we processed the data collected over the winter. The observational data collected gave us a valuable insight into the student experience. And one thing that stood out from that collection of data was our questioning practices. And the trend was that questions that we were asking our students were mixed. They were from the basics, more like the recall, to more thought-provoking questions that got into their inquiry and their interest. So we had a couple of questions that came from assessing our questioning methodologies, which was, do we have balance in our questions? Do we script our questions well? And are we asking students the right question and really igniting their intellectual curiosity? So these are all questions we want to answer about our practices and see where it will lead us. So our plan is to research and provide teachers with opportunities to explore the different methods and find ways to grow in their instructional practices. So that is goal number two. And goal number three is an enhanced version of student connectedness, which we've had in our plans for a while. Go ahead, Gary.
One of our ongoing goals has been to build an environment which respects our students, and there's an ongoing exchange of ideas. I think research indicates that when schools focus on improving school culture and climate, it can pay a huge dividend. You're going to see, you know, various positive outcomes, including higher engagement on the part of students, higher achievement, fewer behavioral disruptions, and greater teacher satisfaction. Ideally, a positive school climate and culture can hopefully close the achievement gap. So in the past, we have used a variety of data to get a sense and a barometer of how our students feel about being members of the Trotter community. For school committee members who are not familiar with this, every other year, we use the Metro West survey and the results from that survey to take a gauge of student connectedness with adults here in this building. This one slide is from, you know, this 2018 data collection. This has been a major driver in our process, and we were able to look at some of the things in which our students felt about their connection in school and adult support. So that's just one piece of a bigger puzzle. Mr. Lavoy?
Sure.
Take the other one. Again, the other piece of this puzzle is something that members of the school committee may be familiar with, and that is our dot activity. If you're not familiar with this, we do this on an annual basis. And if you look to the left, where it says female, where it identifies gender, you know, further left will be each student's name, which we just had taken off of the presentation. So we identify every student here in the building. We ask our faculty members to identify each and every student that they have a connection with. In the yellow is a moderate connection that they have with students, and in the blue is a stronger connection that they have with students. The importance of this is not to, you know, kind of break, you know, kind of give ourselves a pat on the back saying we're making connections with students. Really, the importance is to identify the students that do not have a teacher's name or multiple teachers' names can identify in this process. From there, once we identify where our voids are, we, as teams of teachers, analyze a way in which we can start building those connections with these students who do not have that adult to turn to in the building. Now, we would be remiss to think that if just using simply the Metro West survey and the dot activity is the be-all and end-all, we want to, you know, add another layer to this and provide more student voice in this process. So our next goal is to develop a student survey around connectedness in this building and to measure school culture and climate. And the idea is to find ways to increase student dialogue. And so the proposed survey is... These are possible topics that we want to examine, and we want to have students think about fairness and equity. We want to have students analyze their connections that they feel that they have with teachers or do not have with teachers. We want students to give us feedback about treatment from the administration. We want students to share their ideas about the rules and policies that we have here at Trotter. We want to hear about academic expectations and demands. Is it consistent? Is it too much? Is it too little? We also want to know about participation in extracurriculars. We want to hear their opinions about acceptance and diversity awareness. And lastly, potentially, we want to, you know, get feedback from our Trotter graduates who can give us some insights about the readiness, their readiness for the high school transition. And as they are now a little bit... Now they're mature, if they can give us kind of a reflective, you know, perspective of their middle school experience. So these are the potential surveys. The process is we will collectively, the administration and team leaders, will develop the survey. We're going to share this out with the rest of the faculty. From there, we will identify an appropriate time of the year in which we can ask students to participate in the survey. We will also share with the students why we're doing this and why it's important to make sure that they can see that this is an opportunity for their voice to be heard. What's exciting about this is once we can finish the survey... What's exciting about this is once we can finish the survey, we'll have the opportunity to gather the data and review it. We can identify our strengths and areas for improvement, and hopefully, with these results, it can drive our school improvement and our school culture work going forward. We also know that for students, you know, for middle developmentally, that just taking a survey may not be enough. They need something that's real and tangible and that they can feel and experience. So the goals will be perhaps develop a principal advisory council where students can meet with the administration directly, maybe hold breakfast club once a month where students can share their ideas and their concerns about, you know, elements in the school. In addition, maybe we will potentially reboot our goal-setting activity, what we did a couple of years ago, where students identify either an academic, social, or extracurricular goal and share it with a faculty member, and a faculty member will then, you know, meet with students later on in the year to see their success around those goals.
Great. So that is goal number three. And then to finish things off, we're gonna look at Canvas through a different lens. And early this year, Sandy Scordato, our tech integration specialist, shared with you how we introduced the Learning Management System Canvas into our everyday practice. And we continue to see that good progress of the integration, and this is going to be the next step. So this slide should be familiar to you. This is the dashboard from which students can work from. And the next step for us is, in collaboration with Algonquin and Melican, we are expanding the use of Canvas. So for our final goal of the school improvement plan, we want to use Canvas as a tool to improve the feedback that we're providing our students. And whether it is direct teacher-to-student feedback or feedback shared between students, it is not just about the avenue for the feedback or the clicking or how it shows up on a screen, but more importantly, we want to share ways on how we're going to enhance the feedback to be more meaningful. Sometimes the rubrics that we use aren't specific enough, and in other points in time, the rubrics are too specific, and the real messages around feedback are kind of lost. So our hope is to make this more about quality communication and not just about a test score or a score on a particular project. So through Canvas, with Melican and with Algonquin, there's a lot of different avenues that we want to explore, and this is the launching point from which we're going to do it. So, in conclusion, with the beautiful rainbow going over Trotter, I want to thank Mr. Hershak for helping me out this evening. We didn't compare it to Lee Gould, I don't think. We didn't do any justice. And I also want to thank our school council for their support with these new projects, and we are very excited to take them on. And most importantly, and as you guys are very aware, I want to thank our students, our June, Ben, and Avery for taking the time and working with their advisors to present here this evening. And in my opinion, like I said in the opening, there's no better way to show our progress than through the point of view of our student experience. So we do thank you for this opportunity to share. Any questions?
I have one thing. The survey you developed, so will that replace the Metro West?
No. No, it would not. This is an internal survey. The Metro West survey, it measures a range of at-risk behaviors, and that's not gonna be our focus. Really, the focus is about our Trotter students and the connections that they have with their peers and with adults here in the building. It's really gonna be a launching pad in order to promote more elements of school culture and school climate. The Metro West survey has been, we've been doing it since two thousand and eight. The longitudinal data that we've used and the work that we've compared with Melican and with the high school has been critical. We will still, we'll still continue to use that as well.
And the other thing we're doing with the survey is, this was from the teacher's perspective.
Right.
And what we want to see is from the student's perspective. Does this match that? So where we see that there were strong connections, is that validated through the survey data that we're gonna collect? Because that's the question that always came up, is this is how the teachers feel about their relationships, is that the way the students feel about their relationships, and is that reciprocal? So we want that data to kind of verify that or find holes in it so we can make the improvements. So, the next step.
I have a question and a comment. So how, I may have missed this, but how long have you been doing this chart?
Oh, gosh.
Goes back a while.
It does. It's probably a practice that's about a decade old. The latest variation is about, I'd say, five years old, where we've also collected longitudinal data. So if you see at the bottom here, these are locked years. These are kids that have graduated. So on the sheet, I can go back, and those are students that are graduating next year. Okay? And then the progression is going on. I think that slide's from last year, I believe. So we keep longitudinal data on it. And then if we get a call from the high school, we can go back to here and see how the connections work. So this has been the latest rendition. The first rendition was chart paper around this room, and we had little dots, sticker dots. But then after that, we lost it. They were rolled up and put in a closet somewhere. This can be referenced more readily.
Yeah, it's a fantastic idea.
Yeah.
I think, I also just wanted to make the comment that, you know, for those of us who kind of went to school when there wasn't much technology, sometimes it seems like there's so much technology that you kind of think, oh, you know, you just hope messages and the important stuff isn't getting lost. And it's just wonderful to see these, you know, the communication skills, the connectedness, all these things that are real-world, you know, real-life interaction aspects.
Yeah, and that's what we really want to accomplish with the plan, is look beyond the technology. It's not about adding devices, it's about the experience that the students have. And then, like we showcased, you know, some of our stars today, this is the end product. This is them using technology in different ways but to present their ideas authentically like Lee did, better than we ever could in that video. So, yeah.
That's great.
Thank you for focusing on it. Ms. Johnson?
I just wanted to comment on the methodology of making sure students feel connected. I'm sure they're modest, too modest to share that that was actually rolled up to the high school level, and the high school has implemented a similar practice. But beyond that, it was rolled up and presented to Carolyn Dykma and Secretary Pis at the State House when there were conversations about implementing more regulation on how to be connected, how to regulate that process through the legislature. And it was that model that was, through the high school's work and, you know, certainly created as a good structure here at Trotter at the state level. So kudos to Trotter for all those years ago, creating that model.
Many years ago.
How do you regulate connection?
Not well. That's why we went up and said, please don't pass another law, because we actually have some really good examples of how to connect with kids and to make sure adults are, you know, present in their lives. So a little bit of success.
I can have our June come back and give you a play-by-play on that. Maybe.
Anything else?
Well, thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time.
Very good. Thank you.
Is the next presentation?
No. No.
No shout?
Okay, so the next item is Neri School Safe Roots to School Recognition.
So this is also for Finn and Woodward, who both received recognition as well. So through our work with Safe Roots to School this year, it was a partnership that we were able to bring in bike safety, walking and riding to school safety, and actual bike demonstration, how to take care of your bike, safety elements that help you to remain safe on your bike. And they came in and did a traffic study for us, just for our drop-off, made suggestions for us. And so our representative, Rachel O'Donnell, came, and I met with her on a monthly basis. And as a result of our work, and Finn and Woodward as well, we were recognized at the State House last week. And Stephanie Pollak, who's the secretary and CEO of Mass Department of Transportation, presented each of us with a certificate. And they have great plans for next year, new grants that are going to be available to us, and looking forward to a continued partnership with them.
That's wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It was a wonderful opportunity. There were school districts represented from across the Commonwealth. It was held at the ground staircase. It was really a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the great partnerships with Safe Roots to School.
Yeah, that's great. Very nice. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, approval of grants and donations.
Turn this back to Kathleen.
Okay.
Another celebration of Neri School.
So each year, our P.E., Physical Education Teacher, Missy Nash, partners with the American Heart Association to do a jump-a-thon, and it's in recognition of her dad who had, who passed away, with, had heart issues. And she raises money in his name every year, as well as many family members who have been affected by this and contribute to the American Heart Association through the jump-a-thon that we have. And this year, we raised just under five thousand dollars.
Amazing.
Which is amazing. And over the course of the last few years, the average donation was about twelve thousand dollars, if you factor it over the last five years. So she puts a lot of time and work into this. And this year, she was awarded a hundred dollars from the American Heart Association, which she was just humbled by because she didn't expect anything in return for her work. She does it out of the kindness of her heart and just, again, in memory of her dad. So that's what I'm presenting tonight, to have accepted the donation of a hundred dollars.
Okay, wonderful. All right.
And we need the two.
Yes, okay.
I'll move that we approve the acceptance of the American Heart Association's donation to their school in the amount of one hundred dollars.
Second.
All right, discussion? Vote, all in favor?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Wonderful. Okay, now we're on to school committee, subcommittee, and liaison assignments for next year.
In my role as chair, I put out a call for anyone who wanted changes and didn't hear from anyone, so.
Okay.
There's that.
Everybody, everybody fine with this? There's some blanks, but I assume we don't have to fill those unless we have a shoe comes up or we need to-
In some case, we do not have an active or working committee at this time, but they're placeholders for if and when we do. There is one item, though, that we do need some decision on, and that is the payroll and the warrants, the signing of the payroll and the warrants. Typically, over the summer, we've only had one school committee member sign the warrants. And if that is the will of the committee this year, we do need to take a vote, and we need to provide the town, Jim Hagerty, with the outcome of that vote. So that practice can continue moving forward into next year, and we will be having some early August warrants. The legislature has passed regulation which allows cities and towns to elect one person to sign warrants. What was left out of that discussion was the regional schools, regional towns and the regional school committees, and they've just added that language to the legislation. That is a decision that the school committee can choose to make. I would offer a recommendation that even though it is an option by law, it may not be the best practice, given the complexity of some of the warrants. We have a new team at central office, and having school committee members come in and sign warrants also provides us with a great opportunity to have an exchange, to have some quick questions responded to, whether they're ours or yours. But it also puts a significant responsibility on one member to sign all of the warrants and to sign as representative of the school committee. It's a decision that the school committee has to make. It's your decision, but that would be a recommendation. We may want to continue with two signatures on the warrant. If we are only ever able to get two signatures, well, at least we have one, but going forward, we may want to do that.
So we do have one signature on the payroll.
The summer-
Continue that.
We can continue that, we just need a separate vote for that. So I can submit to Jim Hagerty, Town Clerk, that we have formally taken the vote, and we will only be signing with one signature for summer warrants. So that's fine, and that's been our practice.
Do we have to vote on who that person is?
No.
It can be anybody.
It can be an alternate, like we've had in the past, because people are on vacation and travel, so it's difficult.
How many warrants are there throughout the summer?
We will have a carryover warrant from the FY nineteen budget, so there's at least one, if not two or three from now, because we want to, we have a two-week window to close out. So there would be that period of time, and simultaneously, there would also be expending from the FY twenty budget. So I would say there would be at least two to three on the FY nineteen and probably two to three on the FY twenty, and then payroll again. Right. So it would be two votes tonight, or appointments. The vote, first of all, that we have to send to Jim, which is the formal vote, that the school committee elects to have one signer for the payroll and the warrants over the summer, and then some food for thought about continuing the process of one or multiples. Which seems strange, because if you vote and then everyone's fine with one in the summer, you may want to continue that practice. But there's a significant amount of warrants that are signed, you know, once the school year begins. So you may want to have some relief for that one person who's signing and have two signatures because you have more eyes reviewing those warrants, which is always helpful.
I can take a stab at the first one, I think, so I'll move that we approve the signing by one person of the payroll warrants for the summer period, that be sufficient.
It is sufficient.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All right, all in favor? Great.
And would the practice continue that it is not a designated person, per se, but that we would have any member be an alternate, depending on who's available?
I would think so, yeah.
Should that be part of the motion, or?
It doesn't necessarily have to be. This was sent last year as well, the language that you just moved on to.
And as a practical matter, I'll keep popping in from around the corner. And then if I can't, then we'll get an alternate.
It's usually cockatoo.
Yeah.
I'm not too far, but.
Okay, right. And then, again, moving forward, which certainly can be taken up as a vote in the fall, but easier to have that in place going forward, you know, at this point, whether the committee elects to have one signer on all the warrants, which would be payroll and operational budget warrants, articles, expenses, and so forth, or would continue with the practice of two, all being alternates if necessary.
So I'm, I'm just confused, because on the payroll, I think when I, when I come in and sign it, is there already another signature on there? So there are two people signing, so that's what we've been doing during the-
Yes.
Okay.
During the year. So the summer is just the realization that it's difficult to get multiple people in to sign warrants.
Okay.
And there are very few payroll warrants in the summer. We do, you know, and into the year, I have it with a massive payroll.
Okay. So do we have a motion about during the school year?
That the warrant subcommittee would consist of two signers on the warrants.
Okay, I'm gonna move that during the school year, the warrant subcommittee consists of two signers.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, okay. All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So before we leave the subways, I note that the master plan school committee representative is blank. So either Sam must have commented on the quality of my participation before, or I've lost the job for another reason, or we should probably put my name in that blank space.
All right. Roger, there. Any other changes or additions? No, there are no subtractions. Nobody's allowed to take themselves off. Okay. So we don't, we don't need to vote on this, right?
You have all summer to think about it.
Yeah, great. Okay, so old business is K-12 World Language Update.
Craig, would you like to take this one?
So as you know, the K-12 World Language Task Force presented in the fall, and we had great plans to continue that work through this year, which they did not happen. So we have scheduled some visits for the fall to visit some programs and continue the work, with some specific recommendations to be made to the committee in time for the budget season. So more work to follow from the K-12 Study Committee with more specific recommendations around how we can enhance our current program and so forth.
So future agenda items?
Future agenda.
All right. Thank you. Anyone have any questions or anything? Okay. Next is superintendent's report to the committee, enrollments.
Enrollments are in your package. Always interesting to note the flip side, to see how much we have changed over the course of the school year, ten months. And again, the- Enrollments are in your package. Always interesting to note the flip side, to see how much we have changed over the course of the school year, ten months. And, um, again, the, um, stability factor certainly is a, a very positive impact on the classroom through the year. It's nice to see that our students are in our classes and, uh, we start with the same group and we finish with the same group, for the most part. So those are, um, a variable that's important to note in the success of our schools.
Total variance, zero.
I, I did have one question.
Is that a variant?
Such a good variant.
It looks like, um, are there a hundred and thirty kindergarten students registered already? For the, for next year, is that what that means? Yeah.
We have an inquiry or registration.
Okay.
We're, we're getting up there.
It seems like a good-sized class for this point in the year.
It is.
Yeah. Are you surprised by that number?
I am a little bit, you know, it's, it's, um, you know, the census has been sent out and we, well, Brad looked at that, um, this week, actually. And what we have on the census and what we get, it's completely different. I think we were projected at one oh six or around there, one ten maybe, similar to what we had this year, and we're at one thirty plus.
Yeah, interesting.
And Southborough tracks closer to census than our other two districts as well, so that's interesting. It might be interesting to also note that tuition is free.
Free, yeah.
Next year, so I'm not sure how much that impacts the enrollments. But, um, those letters are, uh, the final letters going out, uh, through Clayton's office, uh, this week. And, um, again, success story, so we'll make sure you have a copy to have that on your files as well.
Great, thank you.
So is, I guess it would make sense if the answer to this is yes. But is kindergarten invariably the hardest grade to project? Or is that not necessarily the case as far as...
Is it, I'm sorry, more...
Is kindergarten invariably the most difficult grade to project? Because you're coming from nothing, if you will, and not necessarily nothing in preschool.
Well, I would say the most fluid is our preschool enrollment, and then K is, yeah.
Okay, makes sense.
Clayton, would you also suggest that it's because if folks are moving into a new district, they move into a district and decide to do that before the child begins school? And that's usually at the K point. So we probably see a lot of people moving into the community that we can't predict on the census.
And it's, what's interesting, especially in the spring, we get inquiries around, "I've heard about your town, I've heard about your school system, I've heard about your student support service department, I have a son on an IEP, and they're comparing us to other districts, and they're kind of weighing the options." It's, it's interesting, you know? I don't know if the other principals get those calls, but occasionally, yeah. So our reputation is still...
And the recent change will even make that more so.
Yeah.
It's exciting.
Okay, um, we have, uh, fiscal year nineteen monthly general fund expenditure report.
Busy time at this point. Um, I'm pleased to report we're still in the black and, uh, working to spend down our, um, budget. We have a lot of projects underway, and so, uh, that's very healthy to have our budget still in a favorable position. I'm also pleased to report that because of some, you know, strategic analysis throughout the year and a lot of folks working to make sure that our budget dollars are spent wisely, that, um, many of the requests that the principals have made for, um, either purchases or some work to be done in the schools have been successfully met. So, uh, there'll be an update, I'm sure, from Brian in the fall. We're sprucing up, please, for sure.
Do you need a vote on this, or...
We need a vote to approve until audited, thank you.
Okay. Anyone?
I'll move that we approve the Southborough Color School District, the school nineteen budget monthly general fund expenditure report as made for first twenty nineteen until audit.
Second.
Comments? All in favor? All right, and then update on capital projects.
Oh, a lot to share, as recently as this afternoon, um, as, um, Principal Muji and I were walking around Woodward property with, um, our town administrator, Mark Purple. And, um, that's after, uh, we visited Finn and he celebrated a student who, um, wants to save the whales and eliminate plastic. And so we sat on the floor with Finn's students as, um, we learned more about her activism. So that was exciting, so we, we gave him a busy day this afternoon. So we'll talk a little bit about Woodward. We know that we had, um, budgeted and, um, certainly held in reserve the funds to complete the Woodward project. That, um, was, um, really a success story, capitalizing on the public safety building being built right next door, new neighbors for, for Woodward. Um, because of the, um, timeline and the availability of the contractors, more than anything last year, it was postponed. And, um, the hope was that it was going to be completed by the start of the school year, and we are absolutely on track. The RFPs for the asphalt and what the town is providing, uh, for us have gone out, and, um, we will be starting on the eighteenth, the day after school. Steve, um, has been wonderful, um, to work with in terms of making sure everything's well timed, so that, um, not only are the summer programs not going to be occupied in the Woodward school, but graciously welcomed into the Trottier School this year, uh, for the town rec department, again, working collaboratively, um, with our towns, and thank you once again for Trottier. But we have communicated clearly to our teachers that access might be limited to allow, um, complete and free access to Woodward, so this project can get completed. So, um, well-funded, uh, we met with Karen Gallagher, mm, two weeks ago?
Last week.
Last week, and, uh, made sure that we were all on the same page in terms of how this would roll out. And, um, there was a slight delay this year because of concerns from the conservation committee about the walkway that would be coming down from the Main Street project. Lot of activity in that space. Um, but we feel, I would say, a hundred percent confident that that's going to be completed by the beginning, or at least the second week in August. So that project is well underway. For those, uh, committee members who have been part of the, um, capital project subcommittee meeting and also the discussions that we've had here, we learned, because we had updated our quotes on repairs of some sizable projects at all of our schools, like the roof, um, that we had a somewhat of an immediate need to flush our pipes, to make sure that it's equivalent to putting antifreeze in our systems, so that in colder weather, those pipes would not burst. Um, it's a project, Keith, I think it's probably ten years past due.
Pretty much.
And we've decided to embrace that this year. And we did receive some far more favorable quotes than we thought to make this a reality in, in all of our schools, to make sure that our schools were safe, no matter the temperature. And, um, it's quite a project. The bids came in and it should be starting any day. So we anticipate that project being completed this month, if not into, uh, maybe the first or second week in July. In addition to that, um, the third leg of our, um, security upgrades is underway. Bids came in, cameras are being installed. We actually installed a few extra cameras, uh, throughout the buildings after getting some feedback from the administration and also the tech department, so that project's underway. So it's a busy time, but the projects are well-planned and the funding was, uh, set aside to make sure that we were making sure that any project, um, was put into place with the highest quality of, um, equipment, but also to make sure that if we're installing cameras, let's get it right. So let's walk through one more time and make sure that we have what we need. So those three projects are, um, underway. In addition to that, um, it might be, um, the summer. I think it's looking very favorable for the gym floor at Finn to be resurfaced. According to Brian, um, it's been sort of put on the back burner for some time, and this is the year that we would like to get that gym floor upgraded. It needs some refreshing. And so we've got some good projects and all are expected to be completed before the start of the new school year, and all are, um, funded. So thank you to all the administration and certainly for Brian and central office for, um, sort of the team approach to making sure these projects move and are completed. Neri, I'm not sure we have anything this summer.
I could come up with something.
No. Hold that thought, let's check your list again, maybe we missed one or two. But Red Cats are coming your way, so that was the big, uh, we were actually able to do more classrooms than we had, than Kathleen initially requested, and she patiently waited to see if the funding was available, and it became available. So I think it's ten classrooms? It's like twice what we had planned for over a three-year period.
So excited.
Yeah, so that was good. And you, you saw a little bit of a presentation on that when Neri did their school improvement plan. So we're excited, a lot of good projects. Oh, I forgot why Mark Purple was there today. So, um, when we walked the property, we noticed that, you know, the youngsters had a great view of the new facility and suggested that the town may want to work with the schools to put up an appropriate fence. So there were pieces of the fence that were going to be installed. If you haven't walked the property, there's a point at which it, it, um, rises, uh, to a higher level than we would like. It's the wall in between, conservation put in a great wall, but we felt that it needed a fence to give one more safety buffer, uh, between the facility and the campus. So there is a lot of landscaping provided there, but we, uh, worked with the town and they are installing, the conservation committee is installing an appropriate safety fence. But we felt that in the discussions, uh, we wanted to extend that fence all the way down to where the new break is in the guide rail for the bus, the entry point. So, um, through some negotiation, uh, the town has agreed, and with Jason Malinowski's expertise in that area, we're having a lovely chain-link black fence installed, and the gate will be a very secure gate that will be installed as well for the bus entry point. So that was a, another sort of add-on, but an essential add-on to separate Woodward and the safety entry driveway for our students. So we're excited about that, and that was done, finalized it today.
We went back a little bit about who costs factor and who's paying, but we're not, so that's good.
And the fence is calling in.
Great, okay, thank you. Uh, okay, so no educational policy, um, policy development and distribution. It's like we have bus transportation and homework in our packets. And then, uh, personnel items, distribution of personnel report.
Two retirements. Best of luck to Scott. Okay, the administrators would like to say, just happy retirement.
Yeah, Mr. Dunn is gonna be retiring in Halloween of two thousand and nineteen. So, uh, he'll be with us for the first couple of months of school, and we're hoping to launch a search committee for his replacement over the summer to get that started. But to replace a head custodian is not a small task, and we're, we want to make sure that we have someone that's really invested in our building, like Scott has been for the last twenty-plus years. So he's certainly gonna be loss his knowledge of the building, his knowledge of the teachers, his relationships, so, uh, we have big shoes to fill, that's for sure.
Okay.
And Nancy is retiring as well.
Nancy Boynton, yes, Nancy Boynton. So Nancy has been with us since, uh, is it Nancy Sheehan? Which one's on the report?
Nancy Sheehan.
Nancy Sheehan. So we have two Nancys retiring. Nancy Boynton is retiring after twenty-five years of being an educational sport professional, starting over at the Old Woodward School and coming over to Trottier in ninety-eight, one of the few, uh, still remaining, I don't think she wants me to say that. But, uh, we're, we're, we're sending her off in good fashion on Monday. But Nancy has been an instrumental part of the seventh grade team for a long time. And Nancy Sheehan, not far behind, uh, came in two thousand and six and has been part of the language-based program for a very long time, started with Marie Allen back in the day. Um, and, uh, has just done an awesome job, so flexible, the two of them personify what we'd like for our ESPs to be, and they do it every day, taking care of kids and, uh, taking care of teachers as well, um, and they will, the Nancys are gonna be missed. Wouldn't you agree? So we'll, we'll be sending them off properly on Monday afternoon on our lunch.
Okay.
Their apples are in the bag.
Excellent, bagged apples.
Bagged apples. All right, thank you. Uh, communications, and at this time, and then action on minutes.
Again, last year, I think, uh, we began the practice of approving all of the minutes that may have been, um, not approved throughout the year, so we can start a school year with no minutes. And we're not approved, and it's easy to, to have that happen when we have subcommittee meetings, because not always do we meet right after, or not always do we meet the rest of the year. Most of the time it's during the budget season. So I was looking at the dates and pretty pleased that we're in the nineteen eighteen, because that's not necessarily the case in if you run a district. So there are quite a few of them, and, um, it's will the committee, if we want to vote them all together or individually?
I would suggest we vote them all together, maybe if anyone has any changes, we can discuss those ahead of time and then that's appropriate.
Perfect, okay. Anyone have any changes? They looked good to me.
I'll move that we approve action on minutes, uh, for six.
One, two. Six, seven.
As listed on the agenda? How's that?
That's, that's the shortest we've ever had on a motion like that.
It's a game seven cut.
It's a good strategy.
That's perfect.
All right, do we have a second? Oh, second, okay, discussion?
So is this for the, I'm looking at the, at the agenda here, for, under action on minutes for one, two and three? Or is this for...
For one, two, three, plus four, A, B, C and D.
And so we're, so we're going to do the, um, school committee meeting minutes as well as the subcommittee meeting minutes in a single vote?
Correct.
We, we've had a practice of doing that. It may not have been since last June, but we've had a practice of doing that.
All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, bills and payrolls, um, agenda items for next month. Seal of by literacy.
Year. Next year.
Next year, oh, that's right, yeah.
I didn't catch that, but I should have. Next year.
Next year. All right. Sounds good. Anything else? All right, uh, that brings us to audience sharing. Anyone have anything they would like to share? Paul?
I do. So we would be remiss in not acknowledging that tonight is the last meeting before Superintendent Christine Johnson's well-deserved retirement. Christine's spent the last thirty-plus years with a singular goal in mind, and that is providing the best possible education for her students. That's at the core of everything she's done for public schools in North Warren and South Warren. As she approaches retirement, she's made it clear to, to this committee that she does not want to be the focus of potential. So she's asked us to refrain from the usual public displays of congratulations. So there's no cake, no citations from Carolyn Bankner and so forth, so. This is difficult for us, because the level of, uh, respect and gratitude we have for her, for the excellent work that she's done, but we think we owe it to her to respect her wishes, for the most part.
Not doing so else.
It's not gonna stop us, saying a, a few words. And I just want to say, it's been great working with you over the last eight years or so. And I've always been impressed with your approach to the job and how you continually found opportunities to make improvements. Like whenever someone moved on from a position, it wasn't just post-a-position and find a replacement. It was like, well, let's take this as an opportunity to see if we can do something different and better. And I think that's how we wound up with Julie Dullow as our Director of Instructional Technology and Digital Learning, and I think we can all agree that's going, um, very well. So I could go on with lots of examples like that, but, um, I'll leave the floor to others. But I just want to say, I appreciate all the hard work you've put in, you know, the results that you've delivered, and thank you for all you've done for the district, and I wish you the best, and a long and happy retirement.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
I haven't worked with Christine as long as Paul has, but, uh, I don't want to say long enough, that would...
Oh, you might have said that on a couple of occasions.
But maybe you would say that, all right.
Never.
And, uh, I'd like to echo, um, Paul's comments. I think he, um, said it well, as far as Christine's contributions to, uh, education in the kids, you know, in this community. And I know that, uh, on occasion, uh, I sometimes ask questions that, um, maybe aren't normal, and I've always appreciated, uh, the way that Christine has handled those, um, with the diplomacy, and, uh, and I will, uh, I will miss working with you very much.
Thank you.
And I, I just want to make a quick comment, I mean, I feel like I've not worked with you long enough.
I don't always hear that one. I don't always hear that one.
It's only been two years for me, and I, I have to say, from the moment I met you, I've just been so impressed by everything you're able to do and your manner of handling things, and I, it's been just a pleasure for me.
Thank you.
Wish you really all the best for a wonderful retirement.
Thank you. I just, there are many gifts a person receives in a lifetime. I think no one, no one can ask for a better gift than to be part of this district. Just wonderful parents, supporting, phenomenal administrators. Their job makes the superintendent's job easier. And the commitment we saw tonight in the school improvement plan, that plan was all centered around what's in the best interest of students. It was at the core, it's books at the core of what we do in our schools each and every day. School committee, you have a very challenging job to, to balance the needs of the district, the constituency, and to just be ever-present. And so I think, I've said this before, we are in these, in this community that I've come to appreciate, very blessed. We have much to celebrate. The best a superintendent can be is an effective steward for the amount of time they're there, and hope that you, in some measure, support the district in a way that allows it to continue to grow and flourish. And that has been the best joy. So I thank all of you, and have no doubt that the next leadership team, the next stewards will continue to move this district forward because that's how we've always held our level of excellence and will always continue to be an excellent district, with people committed to the work and a commitment to look for innovation and grow. And I would be amiss if I did not say how absolutely phenomenal it has been to work with our town as recently as sitting on the floor with our town administrator this afternoon, hearing some story about a cow. But we have just a great relationship with our town, and I think we have that because they appreciate what a phenomenal educational system we have. I have recent ret, you know, comments about that, but I also have the past, and it hasn't changed in 32 years. So thank you, it has been a true joy. Where's Dave? And the association?
Perhaps that's why our town administrator is here.
He is, I didn't even see you, I wouldn't have said all those nice things about him. I didn't even see you.
So thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee administrators. So, I witnessed this evening, it was a brief moment, but your superintendent was speechless. I've never seen that, but as usual, she caught her footing, and away she went. I just wanted to take a little bit of time out of my day, and by the way, that was probably the best part of my day today, going over to Finn and spending time with you and with Mr. Ryan, and spending time with the kids. You know, that was, that was really nice, it's nice to be able to do that stuff. The past several years that I've had a chance to spend with Christine and work with Christine, the big word that has come out of all this has been collaboration. And, you know, we know where we're going to get to, we know how we're going to get there, we're going to make sure that each group is taken care of, everybody gets where they need to, but it's all about community. And, you know, I'm going to miss that collaboration, I'm looking forward to it with Greg. I'm sure that we're going to continue the trend, Christine continued that with Char, from Charles, looking forward to that same working relationship. Wish you all the best in your retirement, I'm sure I'll pass it across again. So, thank you.
Thank you. Know your face.
This is the ghost of.
Yes. As alumni, we had to show up. We thought we'd show up, and just wish you well. And say, I don't know if we missed this part of working with you, but it was a joy all the years. This district owes you so much, from teaching, school administrators, assistant superintendents, superintended, all you've given to the kids, all you've given to the staff. And I know I, it was a pleasure working with you all the years I did, and we wish you very, very well, and know that you will enjoy your retirement, have much more to give.
And I'm here as a repeat performance because I have been on both regional school committee and on Southborough K school committee. And when you weren't chair, and you weren't chair, I was chair. So I had the distinct privilege of giving, or being involved or in charge of at least five of Christine's evaluations. So what I did was I went through those evaluations, and I came up with common themes and repeated words that not just from, you know, one group, but consistently over five years, 20 different people. And here they are. The superintendent is a strong, capable, and collaborative leader. Tireless work ethic, attention to detail, an energy level that is hard to comprehend, strong communication skills, warm and enthusiastic attitude, sets high standards for herself and leads by example, does not shy away from difficult conversations, readily accepts feedback, provides educational leadership, empowers her staff, listens to and engages all stakeholders, committed to students and staff, exemplary job in dealing with town administrators, incredible management, communication, and sensitivity skills, effective leader and role model, keeps an open mind, maximizes strengths of her staff, sees challenges as opportunities, consistent positive attitude, demonstrates nuanced and refined knowledge of our district, well-versed in legislative issues, fosters and grows successful initiatives, navigated challenging budget considerations, promotes a positive school culture, shows enthusiasm and excitement for new initiatives, listens to the community, consummate professional, courteous, timely, diligent, thoughtful, professional, dedicated, strategic, passionate, innovative, encouraging, and the word used most often was collaborative, collaborative, collaborative. But the comment that best sums up the common theme of all the evaluations is, "Her commitment to this district is unwavering, her professionalism has never faltered, and her leadership capabilities, all tested by some of the most challenging situations this district has ever seen, have been unparalleled. The district has been incredibly lucky to have Christine at the helm to serve as a role model for future administrators." And I have framed it so that you can have it. Look at it every day.
Now I know I want to retire.
Anyway, I went first. Wow. But we wish you the best. For the school, all the school committees of the school committee.
Thank you. Mark's already told me I talk too much, so I'm. So I am speeches. Thank you.
Well, that was wonderful, thank you very much.
Very much.
Yeah, and thank you. Christine, we wish you all the best.
Thank you. As do I, this district.
Yeah. Okay, I think that brings our meeting to a close. We, oh, we have one more audience sharing.
But I'm going to respect Christine's wishes and not talk about her. Instead, I'm going to follow up. The last time the canvas was presented, I asked a question about what you were doing in terms of records retention and privacy issues surrounding something that logged every keystroke and every message and all that. I'm wondering if there was ever any follow-up, and if not, I would encourage you to follow up.
Okay. We will take that under advisement, we will, we will follow, we will follow up on, on that. I don't think we have something prepared to give you this evening. Okay. Alright, anything else? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
So move? Second.
Alright, all in favor? Okay.